Meeting of the Planning Commission is now in session. Please join me for the Pledge of Allegiance.
Pledge allegiance to the flag of the United States of America and to the Republic where it stands, one nation, under God, indivisible, with liberty and justice for all.
Kate, may we have a roll call, please?
Gary Cunningham.
Here.
Patty Crowen.
Here.
Doug Bryson.
Here.
Marie McFarland.
Here.
Sean Keir.
Here.
Miles Lessinger.
Here.
And Steve Griffiths.
Here. Are there any agenda changes or revisions?
The only one is suggestion to reverse the order of items 10 and 11 on your agenda.
All right, we'll do that. Thank you. Is there a motion to approve the minutes of our last meeting on October 2nd?
I move we approve the minutes of the last meeting on October 2nd?
Is there a second?
I second it.
All in favor?
Aye.
Aye.
Minutes are approved. I don't, this is now the time for public comments on non-agenda items, but I don't see anyone here who's interested in making a public comment tonight. We have no final orders, resolutions, or written communications. And we do, I think we have a discussion of the Imagine Lincoln City project, right?
Right, some deliberation, discussion and deliberation if you want.
Right. All right. Richard, would you like to lead that for us?
Sure. You first saw this on September 4th and then continued it to September 18th. At that meeting, you requested that staff make some changes to the vision statements. And I've given you a list of proposed changes. Rather than actually having our consultant put the time and essentially money into revising it and then seeing if it gets approved, suggested some changes. If you're satisfied with the changes, then we can pass it on to the planning, or to the city council. The first suggested change is that we'll put the appendix back in, and the appendix being the list of all the ideas, the surveys, results, and so on. So it's one document rather than two. Then on pages seven and eight, there's some relatively minor editing. Then a new page after page 10 describing how the various ideas were distilled into the vision. And there's two paragraphs there which you have, and then there would be appropriate illustrations to go with them as well. Then the other change of significance is on pages 14 through 36, which is where the individual focus areas, goals, initiatives, and then what was called community ideas were presented. It would take out all the community ideas, so all you would have for each focus area is a goal and the initiative, so that the higher level amalgamation of ideas, I guess.
I ask a question about that. Are they, those community ideas already in the appendix as it exists now?
Yes.
So they wouldn't have to be reincorporated back into it?
Right.
They're there. All right.
I will make absolutely sure of that, but I believe that's the case, so. So I don't know if you have any comments, questions, concerns on the proposed changes, or you want to send it on to the city council with recommendations or what have you?
I think if we vote tonight to send it on to the city council, I think we should have in our motion wording to the effect that typos and corrections need to be made in the document as it exists now. Those have not been made yet.
Well, 14 through page 36 be referenced in what is going to be the final report shortened so that if someone wants to see what the relative community thought about relative things, they can come to you or get knowledge of where to go to find the information?
Should be in the appendix itself. So I think the document as a whole would have all that, so the background is there.
So there won't be two separate documents?
Right, one document. The appendix will be part of the one document.
So I'm a little confused, I think, here. At the last meeting that we discussed this, we talked about the changes that we would like to see in the document in order to be comfortable with it going to city council. And I know there was a comment about not having budget left to have the consultant do it, but as I recall, you were going to find a way to make the changes so that we were sending the city council a document we were comfortable with. What I'm seeing is sending the council, or the suggestion is to send the council the document with some suggested changes, but those changes not made, including typos in the document. Is that, is that what I'm hearing?
That is one way we could do it. If you, if it's your preference, we can, if you accept these changes or agree on other changes, we can make them and send them up to the council under the, with the hope that that's what they want.
Would it be easy?
In other words, we can make a new, a new formal version, you know, a new one of these with the changes. I don't want to do a whole lot of iterations of changes because we're already over the budget on this project.
Right, and that's where I thought we were at our last discussion of this, was that these were the changes that we'd be comfortable with making and then sending forward to the council, and now I'm not seeing that those changes were done.
They have not been done yet. Do you like what I gave you? And that's why I haven't done it, because I wanted to hear tonight whether you like what it is or not.
I mean, to me, the change you made to page 10, distilling the input, I like that. Yeah, it explains it much more clearly to me. My question to you is that if we wanted to have, would it be possible, how am I saying this, just to send the city council the text with the changes made in it, would that be cheaper than making the changes to this document for them to review? Does that make sense?
It makes sense, but I think the problem is that you don't, you don't have the text separate that you can edit, correct? It's all been nested into this document on some magical planning people's...
Magical consultants.
Magical consultants format that we aren't able to change. And, you know, I'm, I don't know, I guess I'm still in the same place I was when we talked about this before. I don't think the community ideas belong in it as a visioning document. I think they belong in the appendix as a collection of things.
Right.
Because I think when you elevate them into the document, they become of more importance than I think they should be.
Right, I agree with that, and that's why we're proposed to take them out.
So, okay, so I don't want to see this document go to the city council with those community ideas in it, only in the appendix. I don't want to see them in the body of the document.
But if we vote tonight to recommend it to the city council, we would be sending them this document with the cover letter saying the planning commission recommended these changes be made to it, and the community input would be taken out if the city council approves that.
However you as a body decide you want it put forward, we will send it forward that way. If you want the changes made, we can do that. If you want the existing document with the list of suggested changes, we can do that. Or if you want something else.
Okay. I want to, I'm going to be deja vu all over again and say that I want to see those changes made before it goes to the city council. I don't need to see it again. I trust that you will do that and that all the typos will be corrected that you can find, and that that's, that that's the document that will go to the city council, not as it currently looks.
A motion to that effect would be helpful for me.
I'd like to ask a question first, Richard. The cost of reproducing this document and sending it to city council, you said we're over budget. What kind of number are we talking about to do that again and then send it to city council?
Couple thousand probably.
And then if they don't like it?
Might be less than that. I don't, I'm not sure, but if they don't like it, if they want other changes, then we'll do that. We do have the money in other buckets.
Steal from this one to pay for this one. I've been there.
I just didn't want to spend the money unnecessarily.
Well, in my opinion, this is an important document, and you've made that point a couple of times in your presentation about how this is going to be utilized for decades, for the city, possibly for the county, for the fire district possibly. So I'd like it to be the best we can do. And if that means that some additional funds have to be found to make it that way, I'd like to make it that way. That's just my opinion.
You want to make a motion?
Okay. Did you want to, do you have a comment?
The only comment I have, I agree with what Patty is saying, because to me, it's still confusing looking at some of this to see how it's going to all lay out. So I'm a visual person amongst other things, and so when I see a lot of stuff and I see it in here, I'm still trying to envision how you're going to pull this out and how you're going to put it. So I very much concur with Patty in the respect of wanting to see it and how it's going to go. And a final product to the city council, I think that we want to put something forth that we're pleased with, that we're happy with.
I, my own feelings on this, I think it's time to forward it to the city council and let another body of people work on this with our suggestions, the changes that Richard made tonight, and they're being very aware that that's our feelings on the subject, that the community ideas should be taken out and removed to the appendix and some new wording inserted in this document. So I would be ready to vote to send it to the city council tonight.
So I'm going to make a motion that the changes that Richard has outlined in this analysis be made to the document, and after those changes have been made to the document, the document is then forwarded to city council. I don't need to review it again. I don't, it doesn't need to come back to this body.
Is there a second?
I second it.
May we have a roll call vote, Kate, please?
All right. McFarland?
Yes.
Keir?
Yes.
Bryson?
Yes. Yes. Okay.
Lessinger?
Yes.
Cunningham? Crowen?
Yes.
Griffiths?
No.
Motion carries.
All right, thank you, and do we have any old business tonight? We do, it's a coastal resilience project, next steps with that. Mark, are you leading that for us?
I guess, I guess pull up the PowerPoint.
Just push, well, push B and see what happens. The E, well, right.
Pull up the PowerPoint from down below.
What? Other screen, where? Oh. I was going to say, there's no PowerPoint here. You're so literal. Upper left corner from beginning.
Now hit B.
Wow, this is more complicated now.
Okay, we, good evening. Just want to try to update you a bit on the status of this project, which I think you're all familiar with. We've talked about it a couple of times here. We kind of, it goes by a few different names, but we'll just call it the tsunami resilience project for short. Basically, we want to give an update of where we are, where we're working very closely with Department of Land Conservation Development, DLCD, Department of Geology and Mineral Industries, Dogami, try to give an update of where they are and the work they're doing. And then we have a proposal of some activities to come, some outreach activities in November, December that we want to talk to you about and get some input. So that's kind of the purpose of this. If you will remember, when we talked about this in the past, and the next slide will break down number one there, but there are land use planning measures that are the main outputs for this project. And then the beat the wave, which is primarily what we're going to talk about tonight, the beat the wave modeling and mapping is really a tool to inform those products. I mean, now, it's, it's the one people latch on to because it's easy to, it's mapping, it's easy to visualize, it's, and it's impactful. But, but it's really a tool to help us with, number one, the land use component, there are three products, if you will, that we're looking to get out of this project. One is updating the comprehensive plan with essentially natural resource and hazard information, both from this project and from the natural hazard mitigation plan and other sources. So the first, and this is what Richard's busily working on, is re-upping the comprehensive plan. The second, the tsunami hazard overlay zone, that's, that's a discussion at the moment, whether it comes to pass or not, the idea is to look at the idea. Does it make sense? Is there a need for it? What would it look like? What would an overlay zone look like? There's no requirement to do it. The beat the wave, as I mentioned, kind of feeds into both of these because it gives some maybe better understanding of the risk and how the risk is distributed throughout the city. The last, the tsunami evacuation facilities improvement plan is really an overall evaluation of the, our evacuation system, everything from signage, well, anything to do with that evacuation system. So, and this will be a document, and it will serve, in my mind, is sort of like a master plan for these evacuation activities. It doesn't mean everything would happen today, but there would be a priority list and says in the next X years, we think these things should be happening. Some would have dollar figures associated with them, maybe some detailed design. Some would be just general statements that we need to look at such and such, because I don't think it'll all be fleshed out. So beat the wave is, again, a GIS, a mapping modeling tool. This is done primarily by Dogami. We're working very closely with Meg Reed of the Department of Land Conservation Development and Laura Gabel of the Department of Geology and Mineral Industries. Laura's is providing the primary work behind, or Laura and her team, on the beat the wave modeling. And we'll look at some examples and talk a bit more about what that is. My voice is a little bit iffy, but one of the first beat the wave, in the process of doing the beat the wave modeling, typically they will generate a number of maps and information sets. One of them is wave arrival times, and there's when will the tsunami wave arrive? If the coast was perfectly parallel, thanks, if the coast was perfectly parallel to the fault, then probably it would arrive everywhere more or less the same time, but it's not. In a place like Lincoln City, we don't have a lot of variability for, for locations within the inundation zone. In a place like, looking at the beat the wave modeling report for Florence, where Florence kind of sits back quite a bit from the coast, and their arrival time is significantly greater than it is on the coast, and that has implications, we'll see, with respect to how easy it is for people to evacuate. So the wave arrival time is kind of a key starting point. We're going to look at, for Cutler City, because they did Cutler City first, we're hoping that the other products, the other beat the wave products will be coming within a couple weeks, in other words, and, and will be available for outreach activities, and that's what we're going to talk about in a minute. So again, this is, this is Cutler City, this is work that they sort of started on almost before our project. But you can see the different color codes there as far as the actual wave arrival time. In the case of Cutler City, there's not a huge variance, but there is a significant, you know, almost 10 minutes from, from the coast to, you know, just across 101. So you can imagine if, if for these areas that are, well, even up Schooner or Drift Creek, as you go up in those areas, you're still in the inundation area, but it would take maybe 35 minutes or something for the wave to, to arrive. The net effect of that obviously is if you're the person that's in the middle of the earthquake and you have to evacuate, there are some areas where you have a lot easier time to do it and some where it's a little bit more challenging. So that's the purpose of them, of them coming up these, and they'll, again, do this for every, every area in town, every community in town, neighborhood. So we're going to look at just three scenarios, just to get an idea of how, how they, how they use these. This scenario is, the beat the wave evacuation speed is if you're at any point, how fast would you have to walk, essentially to get to the green area, whatever your closest path to safety? How fast would you have to move to get there? This is assuming everything is as it is. The roads are intact, everything is working great, we're all walking from a point to, to safety, how long would that take? So this is kind of the reference model, if you will. But you can see even there, it takes a fast walk from some areas, others, the bright yellow are, are slow walk. The walking speed, the, the, the standard they use is, I'm just looking, it's not quite, not quite the same, but is four feet per second or 22 minute miles, that's about what a stoplight is measured at. Now, there's the, when you're walking across a street, apparently that's the speed they use. They anticipate, or they measure that vulnerable population, seniors and small children have a hard, would have a hard time keeping up that speed for, let's say, a mile or half a mile. So that gets factored in to a certain extent. Anyway, so beat the wave evacuation speed is just how fast from a given point do you have to walk to get to safety? This is normal conditions. This is the more realistic condition with liquefaction. And, and the way they model that is they take like what are now paved streets and they treat them essentially like sand. I mean, they say, there's going to be problems here, either, you know, topographical or, you know, encumbrances in the street, so, and then actual liquefaction. So this, this, again, they consider to be the more realistic view. And here you can see at some points, you would have to run. And that means run from that point to the green, not just run out of that color, if that makes sense?
Yep.
Because that's kind of the misperception. So, so really, it's moved pretty fast for whatever that is, half a mile or, or more to get out. So then the question is, okay, is there anything we can do about that? Are there any mitigation measures that would change this if, if it's felt they need to change? I should say, if you look at the scale, the legend over here at the very bottom, the fastest speed is sprint, the next category is unlikely to survive. We don't, so far, we haven't seen the whole, the whole city, but they don't expect that we're going to have that pattern on our maps. But if you look at seaside, you see it. So they mean unlikely to survive unless some mitigation measure is taken, whatever that is. In some cases, it's building earthquake proof bridges or earthquake proofing bridges. In some cases, it might be vertical evacuation, et cetera, et cetera. It depends on the, on the location. So in a sense, they anticipate that we won't be as bad off as, as some areas.
Mark, when I look at that map, I look at, you know, the dark purple there where you really have got to jog to get to safety, but that's assuming you're heading north, right? And I was looking at that and say, if there are mitigation measures, maybe there's some kind of path that could take people south across Drift Creek Bridge to that green spot there.
There could be a different path. One of the things they've talked about is, is like, say, 62nd, 63rd is hardening streets. Now, I'm not sure exactly in engineering terms what hardening means, but, so rather than turning into, not that they turn into sand, but rather than being the equivalent of walking on a sandy beach, they continue to perform like paved streets. And that then would, would allow, or a trail somewhere where there isn't, or a bridge over something that's earthquake proof where there isn't. What the one they did look at, and again, this is just kind of for, to show what happens. So if you look at this, and this is if hypothetically there was a vertical evacuation, then they just put it in that spot. I think that's a church, not sure. But you can see the difference, it's pretty, it's pretty significant.
And...
And that's, so that's what their assumptions built, the assumptions they built into what a vertical evacuation means, but, and again, we're not talking about a tower, we're talking about something that's big enough to hold 1,000 people or something.
And, and the assumptions, I, the bridge is out based on this hypothetical...
Both those bridges are out from even the normal scenario.
Right, so that's assuming the current way those bridges are constructed, right?
Yeah, yeah. Yeah, so if, for example, if ODOT came in and fixed those two bridges, Schooner and Drift Creek, maybe it changes something, I don't know. In this case, I'm not so sure, because the bridge is not sort of central to where people are, but, but that's the possibility. So this, this hypothetical vertical evacuation, just to give a sense that if there are mitigation measures with this model, at least, I don't know, with every possible mitigation, but, but there's a way to kind of get a sense of what would happen, and it does two things. One is the colors are more pleasant, at least if you start associating those lower colors with, with not good. But also, and it's not real obvious here, it also changes the evacuation routes. In some cases, the mitigation may be mark the evac, maybe a wayfinding issue. In some cases, the mitigation may be mark, maybe a wayfinding issue, and maybe there are some sort of dangerous routes that people could go on. You know, if you're in this sort of topography, you go up, you go down, you go up, and you don't know, if you're a visitor, whether you're going to get up, you know. It could be, in some cases, that just wayfinding is the mitigation measure that, by these calculations, helps to save people's lives, which is the objective.
And I think a message goes along with this, that you run, you don't get in your car, because you don't want to block those streets for the people.
Well, yeah, and definitely, and Deb's talked about this from the night out, it's not uncommon to hear people say, yeah, my plan is to drive up to such and such, and that was not a very good plan.
Mark, I have a question.
Mm-hmm.
I think I have heard that one of the bridges, either Drift Creek or the other, is going to be replaced here soon?
Um, yes, I think it's the, I think it's Schooner, I think Schooner's...
It's not being replaced, it's being upgraded a little bit for, it's getting cathodic protection and things like that, but it's not going to be...
But it's not a seismic upgrade.
I was going to ask if it was seismic, I didn't know if it was or not.
No. It's more maintenance, really. I mean, it's more of a maintenance issue, it's not a re-engineering question.
What would it take to make the bridge work that they're doing, or going to do on the Devil's Lake State Park and the Devil's Lake water that flows out to the ocean by kilos? Are they doing any structural changes to the bridge?
So far, no plans I've heard include that.
Again, it's more just maintenance and protection of it, so it would last longer through normal wear and tear. Again, cathodic protection and those kinds of things, but not re-engineering, not making it earthquake-resistant. And to do that, all it would take is a whole lot of money and get it a high enough priority for ODOT.
One of the, sorry.
Eventually, though, in...
That's what our, that's what this facilities improvement plan is supposed to do, is prioritize those things, identify them and prioritize them.
But also, ODOT has like a 50-year, well, the state has a 50-year resilience plan. I don't know, I don't know if it's always 50 years. If we go by a few years, I don't know if it becomes a 48-year plan, but, and ODOT similarly has laid out, you know, long-term plans. I don't know where that bridge falls, and it may not, it's not, but I think there are people thinking about it, but that's a pot of money, that's a lot of pots of money and probably quite a ways away. But that bridge is an example, if, let's say, if this beat the wave analysis showed that by having a pedestrian bridge there, it would have a significant positive impact, not the car bridge necessarily, but a bridge, let me just say, a bridge would have a significant impact. One of the solutions, and I think seaside is doing this on one of their bridges, is building a pedestrian bridge that is earthquake, that's seismically sound, will be washed away by the tsunami, but at least will serve the purpose of getting people to the other side and then, so that's the type of mitigation activity. And this kind of modeling really helps in thinking that through, because otherwise, you know, if you just look, you don't, I mean, this takes into account topography and all kinds of stuff that your naked eye doesn't. Anyway, so this is just, this is an example of their very, of their preliminary analysis of Cutler. They will do the same, or are doing the same throughout the city.
Is this the first time this kind of project has been done for tsunami preparedness?
You don't mean here, you mean here in Lincoln City? No, no. It's happening up and down the coast. It's happened seaside, and Warrenton, and Gearhart, it's happened in Coos.
Is this the first time it's been done, or is this a replacement of...
No, this is, these last few years, it's the first time they've done this modeling. I don't know if there were, if there specifically were efforts in the past. I mean, they did some extensive modeling, inundation modeling, in order to come up with the evacuation maps that you're familiar with, the inundation maps. And I think they looked at some of the same information, but they didn't have it packaged quite the same. And I don't think it was quite as useful, like, this is very useful for communities to have. And I don't think, you know, previously, they were, maybe they were tools they had at their disposal, but they weren't really released out. Now, this is not what we're talking about today, but just to mention, this, they will not have completed now in the near future. This will probably happen later in the year, early next year. But there will be some socio-economic analysis that goes with this, especially the damage, potential damage, both in terms of buildings, infrastructure, but also potentially lives at risk or potentially lost. So this will be coming, this is not really what the outreach, the events that we're talking about. Now, that's just a footnote, 16% Lincoln City residents are in the large tsunami inundation zone, I mean. So we have a lower percentage than other places, but still, it's significant. So the timeline, you know, it's not totally, like, the land use planning activity really goes on throughout this. The project is scheduled to end next June. So land use planning has begun, Richard's been working on the comprehensive plan, we've got outlines for the evacuation facilities improvement plan, and started to have discussions about the overlay zone and what that might mean. So that's going to be an ongoing process. The beat the wave analysis is what's, they're just completing now, and hopefully, we're hoping they'll be complete early November, if not later...
Entire city, then?
Yeah, for the entire city. Now, they will do the analysis, and they will make some suggestions, mitigation suggestions, but they won't make what I would call real recommendations that would fall to us, to say, okay, given this data, you know, this is the way the city would prioritize activities, if at all. I mean, if there are activities that make sense. So beat the wave, that's kind of where we're at right now. Community engagement, that's really the other piece of what we're here to talk to you about. We are suggesting, because they've said we will have these things by the first part of November, we're suggesting that we have a series of outreach activities in November and December with these maps to start to get some input from people about what they think. Maybe we talk about some mitigation possibilities so that we can then move forward and refine the information, or maybe we have to go back and change something in the modeling to get some other information or whatever. We don't, we can't wait until the very end to do that, because then it's too hard to So what we're suggesting, and if you see on number two, there will be an analysis for Cutler, Taft, Nelscott, D-Lake, Ocean Lake, Wacoma, Rhodes End, in other words, there'll be seven distinct areas with these beat the wave analyses. And what we're talking about, proposing, that we want to get some input from you on, but is doing five outreaches by combining a couple of these. Meg Ryan and Laura, who I've mentioned for DLCD and Dogami, are willing to attend these, but they, there's some limits to how many nights they want to spend here doing this kind of thing. So we haven't got a definite schedule yet, we need to coordinate. But the nature of the presentations, one, since this will be the public, and we can't guarantee people are up to speed on what this Cascadia thing is, we'll at least do some amount of overview of what the risk is, what we're talking about, and what the Cascadia seduction zone is. Discussion of the beat the wave, this is going to be probably Laura, I'm guessing, the GIS mapping lady primarily. And at any one outreach event, only one or a couple of these areas would be included, so it's not trying to look at the whole city and make sense of it, because I think that could be a bit overwhelming. And the beat the wave, we'll talk about wave time arrival maps, which we just looked at, minimum walking speeds to beat the wave, and evacuation flow maps. And those flow maps are important, even if we did know mitigation activities, because they show, based upon topography, the best route to get to safety. So that would inform our ongoing wayfinding activities. In other words, actually selecting routes. We haven't done that too much, now we've sort of said, from here, go up, go up, but not a real, what I would call a real route. This sort of gives ammunition to doing that, I think, if it makes sense. In some areas where the wrong term really gets you in trouble, then it definitely makes sense. In others, it sort of doesn't maybe make, it doesn't make any difference. And then finally, discussion of the beat the wave results and possible mitigation measures, and we want to extend this and include individual preparedness as well. So we want to tie in individual preparedness, because that's the base, that's the base level that will help us all get along. And maybe we'll have some go-kits or something for drawings or something to, some incentive to encourage people to come. One of the impacts, I think, these beat the wave, when you see that, from where I am, I have to walk at a fast pace to get to safety, and this assumes, they assume in their modeling, I think in all their modeling, a 10-minute delay. So earthquake starts, 10 minutes later, you're able to get up and move. But they're assuming, you know, four or five minutes of shaking, confusion, whatever, getting the family together, all the things that happen. So even if it takes 22 minutes for the wave to arrive at a given location, or, well, yeah, at a given location, you've already discarded 10 minutes of that, or that's the assumption. So I think that message is important for people to say, you know, I don't want to spend a few extra minutes putting together a go-kit. I want to have it ready to go by the door where I know it is. In other words, preparedness really, especially for people in the inundation zone, really takes on more importance. So some general questions, and this is where, you know, who should be attending these? Are there, you know, Planning Commission, Council? If we assume, and I think maybe, how do I go backwards here? Left arrow? If we're, if we talk about these five sessions, as it were, and the only, the reason for combining is because we don't think we can get Laura and Meg here, you know, too often. But then these questions, so if we do that, so we're doing it five times, who should attend? What can we do to get people to attend? Et cetera, et cetera. So any input you have on any of those questions?
I guess, how would we get the word out?
Yeah, how do we notify and advertise publicity?
One concern I have is that if there are five meetings, will there be an interpreter, for example, at each of those meetings? Or we want another meeting to make sure that Spanish-speaking residents have an opportunity to participate in this?
Yeah, I don't know whether a separate, I'd say we...
That's a really good point.
Yeah, but I would say we try to have an interpreter at the event, I think.
We'll have to work on that.
Because we're doing it by community.
Yeah, and, you know, that's, that's an excellent point, to have somebody there that can interpret. The other, you know, the assumption here is that you're going to be home.
Well, not necessarily.
So, but I mean, if you're, if you are...
Oh, I see.
If you're a Rhodes End resident, and you only go to the Rhodes End meeting, and the tsunami hits when you're at the post office, you might not know the information. So the other issue is December, November and December are such tough months to get people to attend meetings. I'm wondering if you've thought about maybe doing a city, a big meeting for the whole city, and then having breakouts for the different neighborhoods? I'm concerned about trying to get...
It's possible, no, I understand.
Meg and Laura down here for a whole bunch of different meetings, the people who own property that don't live here should attend.
Well, it could be more, I mean, it could be more of a, I don't want to say an open house, because it's not that open, but something that says there will be a specific talk at such and such an hour, and then after that, be fairly informal, is a possibility.
Just an idea.
No, I know, I agree. I think, I think having multiple meetings, and there is some, there is value to having people in Rhodes End know what they would be up against in Taft when they're...
Right.
When they're at Mo's or whatever, I mean.
Right.
So there is, I think there's definitely a value in that. It's just...
And we've talked, we've talked about having a map of the, showing the whole city and the impacts on the whole city so that, at every meeting, so that people can compare, you know, their area to others and see that we all are going to have some issues.
Maybe be a good idea to have businesses that are, like, in Taft and Cutler City and those more susceptible areas, have the businesses post evacuation, you know, very clear read, this is the way you go from here.
Yeah, I mean, I think it would, especially if we've refined that a bit.
Yeah, similarly, it would be great if every VRD management company or organization or individual posted that in their VRDs too, so that the people that come here at least have some info, because they're not likely to attend these meetings.
Well, and that's one of the, sorry. One of the reasons for having multiple and having them in the neighborhood to the extent possible is maybe getting more people to show up. When we do these big central things, when you're on my side of it and you look around, you see the same people all the time, frankly. And maybe if we do, if we do it a little closer to home, as it were, you know, there might be a chance we get more people to show up. That's not a given, that's not a guarantee, but that is, that is kind of an issue. If we say, we're going to do these in the community center, we'll get a whole lot of people from Ocean Lake and Wacoma, we won't get so many from Cutler, I mean, that's the, sort of the problem I see with having a centralized thing.
If we do them in the neighborhoods, I think we should choose facilities where there's not something else going on, that's like the auditorium at the high school, and it's just, nothing else is going on, or not venues where there's another activity going on at the same time, because that can be distracting.
Oh, uh-huh.
I think for this, you're right, yeah, that's probably true. We want people to come and have, and we want to have their full attention, yeah.
Along with the, you were talking earlier about the interpreter, has anyone thought about, anyone possibly for the deaf? Do we have anyone sign language, no sign language that could communicate with them?
I personally do not. You know, when we, when we do post these things, we always have at the bottom, if you require special accommodation, call our number so that we can figure something out. But I think the, I think the language interpreter is probably... But I think the, I think the, the language interpreter is probably a really good thing to have in order to attract those people to start with. You know, you could also, you know, we want to make sure that our accommodation is, is accessible to everyone physically, as well as, you know, here, being able to hear. So I'm hoping that people interested would be able to, you know, call our, call us and let us know that they're coming and need some help.
You might be able to get somebody from the school from the deaf over in Salem to come over.
Okay.
Because they have, I've worked with them before, and they have been very, very cooperative about doing that.
Okay.
Yeah, I mean, i- it could be that there are people that would use that service that we don't see at these events, because they know there will be no one there. I mean, that's entirely possible, you know. I don't, I have no idea.
I mean, I like your idea that you suggested too of Patty of, you know, reaching VRD owners and real estate agents, motel operators, so people know that they, you know, what they need to communicate to their clientele, what services they-
And thinking about those first ten minutes, and what can happen that can impact your ability to finally get out and move along that evacuation route, I'm wondering if you want to add just a little bit at the beginning about making your house safer, or what, where you should be in your house, so that you would, I mean, you know, game's over if a giant tree falls in front of your front door and you can't get out of your house, or, or whatever, so.
Or if a bookcase falls on your head.
Or a bookcase falls on top of you, yeah. So just-
Yeah, I would, I think of that as part of the individual prep, and not just go kits, but, I mean, this is a, a different discussion, but one of the things we often hear is, people say, yeah, I understand all that, and I want to strap my water heater, and I want to secure this, and I want to secure the foundation, and I want to do all these things, but it's too expensive and I can't do it. You know, in an ideal world, there'd be some financial facilitation there that would allow that to happen, but anyway. But, but a lot of people say, yeah, I know I should do it, but I don't do it.
Well, even-
But it's still worth talking about.
Yeah.
And I think that, I think the idea of treating the whole, even if we do neighborhood meetings, making sure that we, you know, we spend a significant amount of time talking about the other, looking at the other areas as well. And because I think it's an important message, always, just exactly what you said, is you won't necessarily be in your bed at two in the morning. You could be, you know, at work at two in the afternoon.
Right, right. I mean, just the simple act of having, having a plan for your family to all meet at a certain spot, or, you know, who grabs the dog? Because often, people put themselves in harm's way just trying to deal with the animals, so.
I, I'm wondering if, if what we could do is have the individual neighborhood meetings then come back here at a Planning Commission meeting, and have sort of a, a report back about what happened at those meetings? And then, it would also serve to be a large public meeting for anybody who wants to come and who hasn't been to one of the others, or who wants to hear more. That might work. We'll want to come back to you anyway at that point, to share what, what happened and to figure out our next steps. If we do go ahead with the neighborhood meetings, then you're right, we do have some holidays coming up, but particularly maybe in early, the first couple weeks of November might be the best time. And we will check with Meg and Laura to see if they can, then can arrange some days. Is there any time there in those first couple weeks you think we should avoid, other than our standard Planning Commission meetings and council meetings?
I have a question on preparedness for those Dogonami maps, Beat the Wave maps, because I think that's the critical thing to present, to impress people that they have something they're looking at. So until those are available to, to show, I, I, I think we're not started.
Well, I believe they're ready.
No, we're assuming, when we talk about these outreach, we're, we're assuming that we will have those maps, we'll have that information, those-
Mark, yeah, Mark-
Last of November?
Mark saw the-
Early in November.
Yeah. Mark just saw Meg at a conference and, or no, oh, Richard did. And he said that they were-
I talked to Meg and Laura on Friday, and they expected to have them done this week, if they're not done already.
So, so we are assuming that that would have to be there for, as a fundamental, that the final report won't be completed. I don't know if you've seen, did I bring one?
Is that the one that was referenced in the?
Yeah. Yeah, that's an, that's an interesting, it's, it's not huge, this is it. But still, it's more than just a few maps. So this is the final, you know, sort of report that they, that they put together. We won't have this complete for the city, but we should have the Beat the Wave maps and some, you know, fleshed-out information in a, in a forum that we can discuss.
Yeah, I guess I'd like to look at that information packet kind of thing, so we know what we're dealing with when we're talking to the community, you know? What are we gonna give them that they can, you know, how do I, get invested in really quickly? You know, something, not that scares them, but something that makes them realize that they have, it's a reason to invest my time. I, I really do think I'm gonna hear something benefit somehow from what I'm seeing. And so if we have a product that, that shows them that, I, I think it's a selling point for everything.
Well, such as this, such as what we just showed you for color.
Right, right. Some of that that we've seen.
We'll have that, and we'll have a, a bit more fluffed-out version of that, if you will, with, with, with more textual discussion. And if people are interested in their final report, they, they go into great detail as far as the methodology and that type of thing. So for people that are interested in that-
I kind of glanced at that, I didn't read the whole thing, but it struck me as very technical and not something a lot of people are gonna look at.
No, so we, we're not planning on handing these out.
Oh, good. It's being translated to talking points and-
It's, it's, yeah, I, I think it can be summarized in a way that, that is good enough, and they're aware of that, and Laura promised not to get too techno-geeky about it when they talk about it. So they've done this before, I mean, they have quite a bit, so they've got the routine, yeah.
Yeah, the visuals you gave us were good gripping visuals, you know? People can look at that and say, jeez, that's my neighborhood, I'm gonna have to run, you know? Oh, you know, things like that.
Time to go to the gym, right?
Right, right. Those kind of things will make people interested in being in the discussion.
And I think there's a pretty good public awareness in Lincoln City right now about the consequences of the Cascadia quake, and we learned that at the event at Christus Field when we were interviewing people, but, and then Jenny Damaris has done a lot of outreach in the county as well. And she doesn't hesitate to be alarming. She lays it out, you know, you gotta take care of yourself for six weeks to three months, you know? You're on your own, yeah.
So as far as locations for these meetings, do you have an estimate of how many people you want them to hold? I mean, we have, you know, there isn't really a meeting place in Rhodes End, but the Rhodes End Improvement Association meets every month-
In Wacoma?
At the, at Wacoma Inn, which holds maybe thirty people. And if you got thirty people to show up at that meeting in November or December, you'd be doing really well.
I think that'd be a good turnout, right?
That would be a huge turnout.
Yeah, I, I think that's realistic for most areas. It's, it's hard to get more people than that typically.
So we, we, the Rhodes End Improvement Association has a contract with Wacoma Inn, and we just happen to have an extra meeting date this year, so.
Perfect.
Oh, let's see what that is, yeah.
Coordinate that, if that's a location you would want to use.
Well, that's what we thought with you, we, if we could step through these and see if you have recommendations that are not necessarily on our, on our minds.
Taft and El Scott. The historic, Historical Museum, I don't know if it's open in the evenings, or we could get him?
That would be a good location, yeah.
Also thought of the, the fire station in, the Taft Fire Station, the new-
Taft Fire Station too, where they have the, yeah, that would be good also. They have a very good room there, yeah.
Also, the Community College is another place where we could find a room that would accommodate-
So those are three good possibilities. Probably for parking, the Community College, and the Taft Fire Station would be better than the museum, yeah.
Right, yeah. What about for Color City?
There's nothing but that little church that has, ain't the size, it's not somebody's house or bed and breakfast.
That's, that was kind of my, I've-
But there's the Corner Cafe, that's the only other thing, but I don't know.
Is that, is that open and available?
I don't know what their schedule is.
I mean, it's a restaurant, so I, I mean, it's open, but it's distracting.
Well, we could, we could check that, Corner Cafe, is that what it's called? Across the highway, on the east side of the highway?
Yeah, yeah.
They have it outside their area.
Right.
Yes.
It, it could be in the, the areas we just mentioned for, you know, for, for Taft.
That might be interesting, I'll just check with the cafe and see.
If it's within walking distance to larger portions of populations, you will get a bigger turnout. I think that most people just don't want to drive on one-on-one anymore. Even if it's worth going to, it's like, ugh, who wants to?
Mentally, it seems too hard to go.
Get outside the house.
And it's a good month for it.
Yeah, and, and Color City, I, I did a, an eclipse discussion in the church, and really, I was surprised, it was a very good turnout. But again, people were walking to get there. So I think that made it attractive, which is kind of what we want, really, is to try to figure out.
So Ocean Lake and Wacoma? Do you think the community center is a good idea for Ocean Lake and Wacoma? If we had a separate room, not out there in the trafficked areas?
I, I like the, the center, it's, it's pleasant. The cultural center though is there too, so.
In the lake?
We're thinking of that for D Lake.
Doesn't the fire station in that area have a meeting room? I think I attended a meeting there once.
Oh, eh-
Ocean Lake or the?
Ocean Lake.
North, northwest twenty-fifth?
Yeah, they do.
But they're gonna be, when, when is their construction?
Oh, they're not ready.
There no one near that? Okay.
Okay, so.
Then there are churches in that area also, like St. James Church, for example.
Yeah.
Oh, sure.
Might be good for Wacoma, yeah, yeah.
Churches.
Are any churches on the Rhodes End area?
Nope.
Nope.
Safely. Okay, good. Churches safely. Okay, we can, so we'll shoot for the, for the first couple weeks in November, and we will check into these various places. And what else do we need to know, Mark?
Well, we need to check, once we, you know, we need to go back and forth with, with Laura and Meg and see-
Yes.
What works.
Could be possible, maybe to issue a press release on the meetings and-
I, I think we should, just to have something that's all-encompassing. Because it's not critical, if, if I live in Rhodes End and I can't attend the event that's for my area, the same information will be available in the D Lake session, so I could attend that.
So you'll have all the maps at all the locations?
Yeah, I think, I think, I think that would be the idea.
I think that's a good idea.
So if people can't go to their sort of neighborhood, or they want to go to more than one, that's fine as well.
Sure, well, and like I said earlier, I mean, you may not be home.
Right.
So it would be important for you to know.
Yeah.
And I think, I think, I assume most of these are, meetings will be targeted for residents there, and I think maybe we need one of them to be targeted towards leaders within the tourist industry, who really, I see, is being responsible for educating their clients about, when it hits, you don't get in your car, you grab, you run, and, you know, just to make sure, they bear a huge responsibility for making sure their clients know what to do when this happens. And otherwise, we don't want our roads that will be running up to evacuate clogged with cars that are driven by people from this motel or that motel or that VRD.
One, the other thing is, we want to encourage them to have supplies to cover their, their population.
Their people.
Yeah, and that's been a difficult group, if anybody has ideas about that, it's been a difficult group to address, other than one by one. But as a group, there's no real strong association anymore, that I've seen anyway, lodging association, but, but I think trying to reach that group, and I think also, we, maybe it's obvious, but we didn't really talk about it, you know, when we talk about people's homes and residences and businesses, we also have a big beach, and a lot of people will be on the beach. So if you noticed on, whoops, wrong one. The dotted line, well, you can see the beach trail? I mean, so that is sort of dealt with, if you will, like, it's not ignored, but it could be that there are mitigation measures specifically aimed at how to get people off the beach. Maybe it's signage, I don't know. But, so that's just something, it's sort of related to the, we need to think about which populations are around, make sure we hit non-residents as well as residents, hotels, ideally, VRDs, et cetera.
And the beach could turn out to be an appropriate evacuation route for some-
Oh, route, evacuation route, yeah. Well, I think in some areas, there's no choice, probably, because I can imagine after a serious earthquake, a lot of those structures that people use now to get up and down won't be there, so.
Yeah.
Pretty steep cliffs. So we've got some locations.
How about, okay, talking about who's going to be there, so as planning commissioners, are you going to be around in the first couple weeks of November? And how many of these would you anticipate wanting to go to? Do we want to give notice that, that possibly a quorum might be present at, at any or all of these meetings? Or are you going to probably go in your own neighborhoods?
If we went to our own neighborhood, how many might we have at any one meeting?
How many, um-
Planning commissioners.
Probably two, I would bet.
You and I are in the same neighborhood, yeah.
Ocean Lake.
El Scott?
Yeah, so there wouldn't be more than four if we limited it to that, yeah.
Okay, so what, what's your feeling about that?
I'm gonna attend my neighborhood meeting, but if it's conflicts with something else that's on my schedule, I'll attend another one.
Are these gonna be on the weekend, or?
Well, that's a good question. We were thinking probably in the evening during the week, but do you think a weekend would be better?
Well, if you want to get the visitors that have homes down here, I think at a weekend time, being a little bit more convenient for those.
That's a good point.
Yeah, I didn't think of that.
Yeah, possibly.
How about the rest of you? What do you think is a time when you would go out to this meeting?
I, I would, just because work gets busy around the holidays, I, I would be up for attending the one in my neighborhood and possibly any other one if I couldn't make it, depending on work conflicts, but-
Evenings or, or weekends?
Evenings work better for me then.
Well, maybe you, we'll consider trying to get one on a weekend, just in case that does work out better for people, and we'll try to make it clear in our publicity that, you know, everybody's invited to go to any meeting.
The Saturday emergency event at the Fire Hall in Taft, that was very well-attended, I think, right? Yeah, if I remember.
Usually are. I think because, aren't there free hot dogs?
Then it's at a firehouse. Everybody loves a firehouse.
Free hot dogs.
Well, and that does bring us to number three, incentives and publicity. So we, we've talked a little bit about publicity, and, and we will try to maybe post some posters in businesses around town, and, you know, other areas where people gather, we can do our usual, well, we'd obviously do our usual notices to the media. We'll post something on our website, and maybe even link to some of those images, so that it, that people do get a little taste of what, what it is, and, and come out to see the rest.
Do you have a, an email blast for VRD owners? How would you get in touch with those folks?
Oh, that's a good question. We can ask Weston, yeah, what the best way is to communicate with all VRD owners, if there is one.
I don't want to go to the expense of a mailing, but-
Yeah.
I mean, I don't want to go to the expense of a mailing, but, you know, if there's an e, you know, you've got email addresses for those folks.
VRD and hotel owners, yeah, it would be really nice to have a list of all those people.
Or VRD companies would have their clients, and they could take responsibility of notifying them.
That's true. Management companies, yeah.
Direct.
I, I think one of the, you know, I shouldn't say concerns, but one of the questions is, we, we want to present this in a realistic, factual way, create awareness without alarming everyone and getting people upset about their...
I think it's okay to alarm people.
Well, you hear the property value discussion, I mean, anyway, I'm just, I'm just throwing it out there. I think it's a reality, I think there's an inevitability to it, and I think most people are aware, so I don't think we're really causing a problem.
I don't think you're surprising anyone. But I, I do, and I think, you know, you can put it, this is, you're the government, you're here to help, you know? I mean, you're, you're giving them information that they don't, they wouldn't have ordinarily, and this, the, the modeling coming out of the beat, the wave is about as specific as you can get for the neighborhoods, and I think that's a good thing.
And from what we've heard anecdotally, I'll say, not formally, but even places like Seaside that have a more dismal kind of picture, that people are still glad, they'd rather know it and see it, you know, than hide it, so I think that's, I assume that's true.
The good part about this is, and maybe not in your lifetime.
Well, yeah. Depending on your age.
Depending on how old you are.
Yeah. And maybe not in your lifetime, no matter how old you are. Yeah, that's possible.
Speaking of getting a hold of property management for VRDs, I, I would think it would be good to get a hold of those who do the long-term rentals, too, because I feel like those who rent get ignored, even though they're not property owners, they are full-time residents, and, and we need to make sure that they get notices. I remember being as a renter, stuff would, the owner would get letters, and then all of a sudden, there's somebody who wants to work on my plumbing, I never got a notice. I think it's time that we, we may make sure that they, we might get a lot more people to turn out, too.
Yeah, that's, that's entirely, that's entirely possible. Okay, is that? Anything else, anyone? Any other? We will know soon, and I don't know how we communicate this, but we should know very soon that we'll, we kind of have to wait until we know we're going to have this stuff before, I think, we don't want to schedule anything like next week.
Right.
But we should know very soon, and, and, you know, hoping we can, we can get something moving. And there will be further, if there are significant mitigation activities that come out of all this, there will probably be, you know, public outreach-type discussions that are more specific, like, you know, we've concluded we want to do this, it costs $50 million, what do you think, type of discussions, but we're not there yet, and won't be.
Well, thank you very much, Mark, for getting us started on this, yeah.
Thank you, Mark.
All right.
Mr. Chair, I forgot when you asked about agenda changes or revisions, there is one thing, I forgot, there's an addition, which might be a good time to hit it now.
Sure.
Happy birthday.
Okay. So you know, we've been doing, working on our design standards for the city, and we did have an interesting day with the Chamber of Commerce, where we had a visual preference survey, and those people who attended gave us a lot of input on images that we showed, and now we are, have come up with an online survey, and so I just want to give you a glimpse of that.
Is this on the city website?
It will be shortly, it will be shortly. So it starts out with just a description of what we're doing, what our design guidelines, and then tell us what you think, it talks about, gives instructions for how to do the survey. What we're planning to do is put this on the website at, right on the, the main page, right, Kate, under current news, I suppose, and so we'll have it up there for a couple weeks, and we'll try to get publicity out about this, that it's available, and this is the first step in doing that, so people should start looking in the next couple days for this. So then you get into the fun pages, well, you have to tell your, tell about yourself and how you would describe yourself, mostly, and how old you are, and what's, wait a minute, what's your age is how old you are, I missed one. Anyway, and then you get into the interesting part, where the, the survey describes a, a topic, a concept for design, in this case pedestrian space and larger setbacks from the street. Do, and then the question always is, do you think this is a good fit for Lincoln City? And so then you have these choices, and you choose one, and then you also have an opportunity to say more about either the image or, you know, why they voted the way they did. So then the next one is, I'm just going to flip through these, parking and outdoor seating, same foils, contiguous building front where they're all connected side by side, outdoor seating in the front of the building, and, you know, at the, like, for instance, at the Chamber of Commerce meeting, some people like this because they like the idea of, of the seating, but they, other people were saying, well, where's the sidewalk? And we have to make sure we have room for this, you know, people to get by, and, and so, you know, that's probably the kind of comments we'll be finding. This one is green parking lot buffer and stormwater detention, small retail development parking behind the building, small retail development parking in front of the building, off-street parking behind the building, and on-street parking, is what it's showing, wood siding and with entries above the street level, tall ground floor with windows along the street front.
Deb, are these the same questions that we had the little clickers to answer?
They are.
They sound vaguely familiar.
Some of them are the same, I think there are a few different ones, if some of them just didn't seem to resonate, then we just excluded those, and we put in a different, a different image, so that we could get a more, at what kind of a response, at the response we want to hear about. Contrasting colors, that one you probably remember, this is one, roof gables and dormers. And these are all things, you know, that we do, we do address in our commercial design standards now, so, I mean, there's a reason why, that we were picking these kind of topics. Materials, for instance, and this is a tin shed, but it's, you know, it's a cute tin shed, so maybe we don't really hate tin as a, as a material, or maybe we do. Multi-story structured parking, parking's back here in this case. Upper-floor setbacks, this is actually part of the same building, I believe, in this case. A large commercial, and this is showing two safeways, one is, is the way ours looks here in town, and then this one is broken into smaller, sort of department, or smaller, what looks like smaller attached buildings. And so in that case, you get to choose between which one you like better, which one's a better fit for Lincoln City and Starbucks. Multi-family is something that we're going to be addressing in the design standards that we have not really dealt with before, so the question is, do you like this one? Do you like that one? Or this one? And talking about, you know, how this one is close up to the street and has a stoop, so drawing out some specific styles, contrasting materials and upper-floor gables. And so we hope we'll get a lot of people responding to this, telling us what they like. We got some really good input, the first time we took this out at the chamber meeting, but certainly that was, you know, I mean, I, thirty or forty people, I think, were there, but there are a lot more people who probably have opinions about what they want their town to look like, and so there we are at the end, and then, and then they submit it. This is telling me it's not up online yet, but in the next couple of days, it will be. So I know I went through that really fast, but our consultant did, I told him I was bringing, bringing this to you this evening, and he said, if you have any comments that will make this more useful, or about the project generally, he'd love to hear them at this point. So, if there is anything.
Well, I, I like the survey, I like the idea that you're going to get some input from folks. I'm wondering if they will wonder about financing it, or the economics involved? Is that down the line, or are you just, at this point, just trying to get, what do you, what look do you like?
Yes, I think, I think that's mainly our goal at this point.
I'm just, I just don't want people to say, I don't like this because I'm not paying for it.
It looks expensive.
Yes.
Period, right?
Yeah.
Okay, yeah. You know, that may be something, maybe we should add a couple comments right at those introductory pages, if people, you know, take the time to read them, that says, you know, right now, let's focus on looks that you like, and then there are various ways of achieving looks, and, and some are more expensive than others, and we can kind of work through that.
Yeah.
When we know what, what it is we want.
Some of the comments at that chamber meeting, people were, I think, sort of frustrated, saying, well, this isn't going to happen because the people that own these buildings don't live here, or whatever, and there seemed to be an economic driver behind some of those comments, so.
We do have, our consultants are going to be giving us some ideas about how to implement, and hopefully, you know, that will help with some of, of that kind of discussion. We've also had, I remember a comment about, we still, you know, we want to use our creativity in, in designing our look and our building, and, and so, you know, that's something else we have to consider, and balance that with, with a sort of, maybe a more cohesive look for the community. Or maybe the villages are all going to continue to be independent and very individual in, in their looks. So we still have a lot of work to do, but this is the next step.
I'll throw it out, look forward to it.
Okay, thank you.
Thank you, Deborah. All right, so we're now at future agenda items and next meetings?
Yeah, on the November 6th, a hearing will be, there'll be a hearing on amendments to the sign code. And then on November 20th, there will be hearings on some changes to the parking requirements for TAF Village Core and the Ocean Lake Plan District, as well as hearings on changes to various things relating to affordable workforce housing, particularly allowing tiny house developments, allowing what we're calling four-flat buildings in residential and commercial zones, four-flat being a, basically a four-unit apartment that looks like a single-family house, looks like a big single-family house, is what we called the big house in the past.
Richard, these are all public hearings?
Yes, yeah, and I had at your desk tonight, I believe, did everybody get these? No, okay, you didn't get it at your desk, but you'll get in your mailbox, mail announcements that were just sent out to every property owner in the city about the dates for the hearings, at here as well as at the city council.
So the workforce housing is the 20th?
Right. That's what I have on future agenda items.
Reports and comments, I have one announcement to make, and that is, coming up on Thursday, October 18th, at precisely 10:18 a.m. in the morning, we will experience a great American shakeout, so please hold, duck and take cover for one minute, and that's a way to practice preparing for the big one. So drop and hold at 10:18 on October 18th, Thursday. And that's, also any other comments? Commissioners, our attorney? No?
Ah.
Yes, Richard.
Did you have something?
Well, yes, we did want people to be aware that the Rotary is having a forum for two candidates, are you, you have that one?
Yes, that is Lincoln County Commission Candidates Forum, featuring, featuring Jenny Damaris and Doug Hunt, who are the two candidates. It's at noon Wednesday, October 24th, at the Salashan Resort. It's presented by the Rotary Club of Lincoln City, and pre-registration is required, lunch is $13, and to register, call the chamber at 541-994-3070. That's 541-994-3070. And that's Candidates Forum for our two people running for the county commission, Candidates Forum. Good.
And the other thing to mention is, speaking of Thursday, October 18th, not at 10:18, but at about 12:30 in Bend, at the Oregon Chapter of the American Planning Association, our senior planner, Deb Nicholson, will be recognized as the Planner of the Year. The actual award is called the Distinguished Leadership Professional Planner Award, known colloquially as Planner of the Year.
Congratulations, Deborah, that is so well deserved.
Thank you so much, it's really nice to, to be receiving this award, you know, when I was in graduate school in the seventies, I, we were all watching Oregon as it, you know, became a leader in statewide goal, planning goals, and, and Department of Land Conservation and Development and urban growth boundaries, and, you know, it was a long way from home, and I never thought I'd be a part of it, but then nine years ago, Richard hired me as the senior planner, and here I am, and on the beautiful central Oregon coast, and it's really been a great move for me, and Richard nominated me for this award, and in, you know, many other ways, he's been a great boss, too, and this is, I guess, National Bosses Day, if that's what my calendar says, so. Thank you, Richard. Yay, yeah, yeah. And, and I, and I want to add that, you know, the, Kate has been a great support in, in all that we do, and we're glad that we have Weston on board now, and he's, he's just been a planner here for six months, and he's at his first APA conference already, and that's really important, those conferences give us a chance to, to see through the eyes of other planners, their communities, and their programs and projects, and that's, that's really great. So I also want to just say that, that especially in, in this time, you know, that with all our national and, and programs and our environmental crisis and, and, and political divisiveness, that it's really important for us as planners, both commissioners and professional planners, to, to be reaching out to all the people in our communities, to try to build sustainable, sustainable communities for ourselves. And so, you know, I just want you all to pat yourselves on the back, because I think we, we do a lot of good work together, so thank you very much.
Thank you, and you've done such an outstanding job of really involving the community in our city's planning, as well as all the other things you do, and I've worked with you as Chair of the Parks and Rec Board, and now as Chair of the Planning Commission, and it's been a privilege working with you.
I thank you very much.
Anything else? We are adjourned.
I've been smi...
Do you want to?